We call the regular scheduled February council meeting order. Thank everyone for coming out citizens and um everyone gets to people citizens watching via social media's account will open up with our prayer and our pledge. Um I asked Mr. Watkins if he would come lead us in prayer followed by our pledge.
Father, again, I thank you for the day. I praise you for the blessings that we've received and just ask you to forgive us when we fail and sin against you. I pray, Father, for the mayor of the council to say, discuss city business that you give them wisdom and guidance. Father, again, just want to tell you that we love you, we praise you, we pray in your name, for your sake.
Place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you would, call the Ole Miss clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Golden?
Here.
Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
So I talked to Mr. Law, they uh Mr. Woods, they both had um other engagements coming, both of them doctors appointment and Mr. Woods uh actually be preface his wife. She had a knee surgery, knee replacement, so he's with her. Um and also um Carrie Beth went home sick today too, so she's feeling under well, I hope she be feeling better here pretty soon. All right, uh first order of business we have is to approve the minutes from our January council meet. Is there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion that we approve the minutes uh from our January council meet? We have a motion of their second. Second, Mr. Brown, if you would, cash your votes. Motion carried. Next thing on my report, I have uh we'll be closed next Monday for President's Day. Um I also wanna put, I'll get you guys an official invitation, but our annual mayor's charity ball will be April the sixth at seven P M. And then I would like to ask for the Hardeman County Commission for Black History Committee if they would come forth at this time. Representative for everybody, however y'all wanna do it. They have uh events every year during Black History Month and have a chance to attend. I try to attend all of them, but once I can, I just wanted to first recognize the group and say thank you for what you've been doing uh for all these years. I was a recipient of that scholarship when I graduated high school to uh go to Tennessee State, so I appreciate it, man, and I know the students appreciate it. So uh just ask you guys to come and first, like I said, say thank you and then give y'all the platform to announce uh any events that you guys, that y'all wanna uh talk about that y'all have this month.
Of course, you know, two of your members also know, we just had our banquet Saturday night and it was a success. We're coming up on our exhibit opening up this week at Thursday, this Thursday. And it's gonna show this year theme, which is Afro-American arts. Afro literature arts and visual arts. You must come and see because it's it's something new every year. And everybody that was on the Hometown Heroes from January of uh two two thousand twenty-three to December two thousand twenty-three will be up. Of course, everybody sees the Hometown Heroes that was on there. And then this other exhibit is the fashion, the food, the literature, a salute to black cartoonists, uh salute to Soul Train, salute to our general histories also. It's a lot of things there. It's a buil- it's a building full of knowledge. Please come and see that and it will be open Monday through Thursday for about appointment, but this Thursday will be just a soft opening for anybody that's gonna come see. And Saturday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday is open to the general public. Uh you can call me or Ms. Marilyn James, which I don't have a number right, but my number is seven three one six oh nine six eight eight four. If you wanna come through Monday through Thursday for a group.
And it's gonna be in the Curve Building on the Fed Street, uh right across from the side of Wheeler's, old Wheeler's building.
Okay, the next event is the musical. Ms. Gill's gonna tell you about the musical.
Hello. The musical is this coming Sunday, first time ever at the Louise Theater. And the doors will open at six, it'll begin at seven, and we posted it up on Eventbrite. But we also have printed tickets as well, cause everybody's not acclimated just yet to Eventbrite. And we have an international guitarist, uh recorded artist that's gonna come in and his name is John Jubu Smith and give us a little of the Jubu experience. And uh he's also with the Soul Seeker, so he has country music, R and B music and gospel. He'll be here, uh George Dean and the Gospel Four will be here out of Memphis, Tennessee. And our amazing choir will be singing as well, the twenty twenty-fourth edition of the Hardeman County Black History Choir. And then we have a young uh soloist, he made his debut at his church, he's eight years old. So we invited him to come and sing with the choir. And so we have uh some music for all ages and that'll be this Sunday at the Louise.
Then the fourth Sunday is our countywide for all the churches in the community that wanna come s- come support us and we ask for donations from different churches. We'll be at Union Hill Baptist Church in Waverly. Uh the speaker will be Dr. Hampton, the dean of Lane College. He says ensemble choir, Lane Ensemble, ensemble, help me out somebody. Ensemble Choirs coming along with him and uh and Baptist uh uh
Hardeman County Baptist Association.
Association Choir is gonna be there. And this is the program that we have where we try to raise money through all the connected churches to give donations to help towards our scholarship fund. Our funds go towards scholarships for Hardeman County students, Central Milton. And we try to do it for uh every year. We have been successful for every year and we hope to just be be- better years than last year. Cause the more funds we get, the more scholarships we can give.
And how many years I've been doing this?
Forty-four years.
I thought it was forty-four. Thank y'all so much for volunteering and putting out the work in the community that we appreciate.
What time was that Sunday?
Sunday is at three o'clock at Union Hill. Mm-hmm, and just come in, it's not no charge or nothing, just come in.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all for having us. We appreciate y'all.
Ms. Betty?
Uh can I, I wanted to make a quick announcement. I don't know if you know this, but um on Monday, President's Day, the Dixie Benefit Benefit Association and the Funeral Home, they're doing a free screening of the movie, uh Origin. It's gonna be two showings, one o'clock and six o'clock. Um and it reminds me of back in the day when my the my mother paid for everybody to go see uh Mal- Malcolm X when the movie came out. And so it's free and you go on Eventbrite and get tickets and I think Beth and them are hosting that.
Mon- Monday at one and
There's a one P M. and a six P M. I don't know if they're sold out, which uh which one. But I got tickets, I went on, I got tickets for the six P M. showing, but it's Isabel Wick- Wilkerson's uh book, uh cast. It's actually a book about what divides us and what we can do to try to bring our, bring ourselves back together is what it's actually about. And she's a wonderful Pulitzer Prize winning author. And uh this uh this movie has gotten a lot of acclaim, so I think it is gonna be a good opportunity. So yeah, that and it's on President's Day when a lot of people are off and kids are out of school, so we appreciate them for doing that.
Thank you so much for letting us know that. Um all right, any uh public comments, anybody? All right, so we'll move on to standing committee reports. We'll start with the uh electrical, excuse me, start with the electrical report. Uh B A Board met on the twenty-ninth, took the following action. The board was given update of financial position of B A uh from the consultant Chris Mitchell. And the solar farm has saved B A and its customers two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars this year. So um viral update, three thousand eighty-two active customers, two hundred and five business customers, two hundred and thirty-eight waiting for connection and have a thirty-eight percent take rate and B A will also be closed on President's Day. Next half utilities, uh Mr. Knuckles.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Our report is uh we met last uh Wednesday, February seventh. Uh we talked with uh Joey Junior was present here, which he's gonna present later on today, the budget and uh went over the budget, which is pretty good in our favor, the utility department. And uh we also, the board also voted to purchase a new electric fuse machine, which we melt our gas fittings with. It's a computer. And then also we've got to update our software for our automatic meter reader of water and gas. And they approved that, which this is gonna be in the budget. And uh they approved that and also knock on wood, gas was sixty-five cents again for the month of February. And I also would like to say, the mayor may comment to me, I wanna commend our guys for the work that they did during the ice and the snow. We ran our plant, our water plant twenty-four hours, had three shifts and you know, knock on wood, we didn't have to boil water thanks to the guys that stepped up and we just got lucky. And they went above and beyond and I appreciate our employees. I wanna commend them for that. Thank you.
Well, that's fire, uh Chief Price.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Chief.
Uh my report, um total fire call, we had thirty-five, we had twenty-four in the city, we had eleven in the county. Um training hour, we had two two eighty-eight, smoke alarm install was twelve, fire code inspection with ten. Um what y'all don't have on your report, um also, Mr. Knuckle, I also wanna thank my guys and not only my guys, Whiteville Fire Department also. They responded with us, sub-zero weather, fighting fires in the ice and the snow. Uh just want you guys to know, man, we have a great bunch of firefighters and volunteers. Without our volunteer, we wouldn't have a fire department. But I do wanna say thank to the guys and let you guys know how great our fire fire department is. Uh we also uh got awarded a eight 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 thousand five hundred and ten dollar grant for the state fire marshal. Uh this is a volunteer firefighting equipment grant that we're gonna purchase, um S V As, air packs, cylinders. And we got a twenty-five-year-old washer that wash our turn our gear when we come out of uh fires and stuff to clean them. We're gonna replace that twenty-five-year-old uh washing machine over there also. Um that's my report.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all.
Next, police. Chief Jones.
Good evening. My report is as follows. Four hundred and seventy calls for service, a hundred and twelve citations, we had seventeen accidents, all of them with property damage. Twenty-nine arrests, two of those were juveniles, twenty-seven adults. We did ten training hours and we had two Tennessee Highway Safety Office saturations. That's my report.
Thank you. Uh Chief Jones, uh standing there for Mr. Ford, Mr. Borghardt with uh Parks and Rec.
Good evening, uh Mayor and Council. Uh our report for Parks and Recreation, um we have started to prepare baseball fields uh in parks for the spring and summer months. Uh the ducks exercise class continues on Tuesdays and Thursdays at five P M. Uh duck pickleball is is also on Monday, Wednesday and Friday from nine A M. to eleven A M. Uh youth basketball league ages six through ten is going well. Um the eleven through fourteen age group registration has begun and will uh run through March the first. Lastly, we will explore uh explore intro to tennis this summer, a summer league for tennis to generate more interest in the sport. And we will come back with you with more information during the spring.
Famous Borghardt?
Thanks.
Y'all want some energy and excitement, y'all go over here and check out uh basketball on Saturday morning. You gotta let the dude get get a little violent over there with them six or seven-year-olds, just like they playing for the gold ball somewhere. Uh streets of sanitation, I I did excuse Eddie on on tonight, uh so uh on their report, picking up leaves and branches. Uh taking to uh tray of tons to the landfill was three hundred and four, commercial a hundred and forty-one, residential total of four hundred and forty-five tons. January uh was buck pickup and everything else is routine. Next, uh library, Ms. Jessica.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Uh for the month of January, uh we took in for revenue six twenty-seven seventy. We had a total of eight programs. Uh estimated patronage of five eighty-five, uh cert report, uh total circulation, we had one thousand seven hundred fifty, one thousand seven hundred fifty-six items circulated. Two hundred and fifty computer users, two thousand six hundred ninety-seven Wi-Fi users, seven hundred nine reads, seven history room visits, three microfilm, thirteen history room materials circulated, eleven interlibrary loan borrowed and eighteen interlibrary loaned.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Compliance, Mr. Watkins?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You should have a copy of my report, uh building consultation six, permits written one, building inspections one, plumbing inspection zero, mechanical zero and twenty courtesy notices issued. We don't do a whole lot of courtesy notices usually in the month of January, cause that's a bulky item pickup month and so it gets set out and then it gets picked up. Now, next month probably a little different or this month probably a little different. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, uh my compliance, I'm sorry. Tourism and computers development, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Council. Um you've got my report there. We met with T dot uh on a future planning discussion group that was here at the city hall. I worked on the events and sponsorship opportunities for the upcoming year and met with the main street and chamber directors uh to follow up on those plans and get those on their calendars. We began promoting and selling tickets for a new live concert series at the Louise this upcoming year and those ticket sales are going really well. And uh I met with Build a Better Bolivar Committee to finalize plans for a couple of outings this year along with Cinderella Project. And I think you guys have the Cinderella Project flyer uh in front of you there. It's gonna be a uh like a clothes closet, but for prom dresses, prom shoes, prom jewelry. Uh it's housed at the Methodist Church. Um the efforts of Build a Better Bolivar, it has listed there the places that people can drop off uh their used prom dresses. And we'll have a couple of Saturdays that people that uh need a prom dress, that may not can go out and and just buy one, can come there and pick one up uh free of charge. So that's gonna be a great thing for the community and for our uh students. And you also have the lineup for this year's twenty twenty-four Live at the Louise. Um so if you could help us get the word out on both of those things and put those up uh somewhere where people can see them for us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hill. If you guys wanna go Thursday to Motown, I got tickets if y'all wanna, uh any of the council people wanna come to that. Um that's Thursday at seven thirty, Thursday at seven thirty. But let me know quick, cause they leave pretty quick too, so call or text me or let Carrie Beth know. It's a real good, real good, uh real good show, the Motown review. Uh planning commission, Mr. Golden?
Uh the planning committee met um twenty-ninth at five o'clock, elected officers, placement in there, reviewed consideration in the site of a new dollar store that will be located at three twelve East Market Street.
All right, time to go. Let's all uh committee reports on the old business discussion.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh cause I wanted the uh department head to give their report first, but I did wanted to uh commend the department heads and employees for being out in the snow, ice, the utility, police department, fire department. I mean, those are the ones that's gonna have to go whether it's rain, sleet or snow. I've been there and done that. Wanted to go home many times on snow days, but I had to get out. And I wanted to uh definitely commend the uh, I know y'all gave y'all report that y'all did commend, but I wanted to make sure that the citizens of Bolivar and the council did, do appreciate that. Thank you for a good job. Well done.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. Under old business, uh discussion, new date for public hearing on proposed annexation. Um I wanted to, we changed, we originally was gonna do that tonight, but with the timeframe, like we was pushing real close on if we got it out there Friday, would it be enough for, is it fifteen-day notice or whatever to get it all out to all the people? And this this office was covered in envelopes, so I didn't wanna try to rush it and we didn't make that deadline. So I just said we wouldn't do, I postponed the council that one for tonight and I didn't, we hadn't sent them out yet. So I was gonna see if it was okay with everybody to move it to our council meeting in uh in March to do the public hearing on it then. Any any problems with that, anybody? We, instead of setting it on a different, it may make our time here longer, but instead of setting a whole nother day, I feel it would be easier for everybody since our schedule is already clear on that day, so does that work with everybody? All right, uh I will get that put in and we'll put that notice in the paper and then get those letters sent out. But the all of those are ready to go and ready to be sent out. Any other, any questions involved in it? So we'll set it for March the eleventh. I'll write that down. Okay. All right, uh under, that's no other old business, under new business, uh we got Mr. Joey uh Jeter here with our audit, so we'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank y'all for having me today. I don't know what it is when I come down here for this, but it's either raining or snowing or cold or something. I don't know if I bring it with me from Brownsville or what, but hopefully get out of here quick. Um I hope y'all have a chance to kinda look over and uh I'm gonna hit some high points and then if there's any questions, please feel free to ask me and if you if you look at something, you know, week or so from now, when you, something comes up, please feel free to reach out to me. I'll be more than happy to help any way I can. Um so to get started, uh just wanna kinda highlight, if you'll turn to page two, it's got our pretty letterhead on the top and that's basically, we're giving our opinion, um unqualified opinion, which is the best we can give. Y'all have always worked real well and 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 done what was needed to be done, so um that makes my job easier and and it just makes the state happier with everybody. Um kinda get to the meat and potatoes of the numbers. If you'll turn to page sixteen. This is the governmental funds, uh the general and then the other governmental funds are combined and that's your uh state street aid and drug fund. You can see there, cash in the general fund is four point three million. Uh well, with restricted, it makes it four point four, so we're sitting uh really good there. Uh and the other governmental funds, we've got three hundred thousand in cash. Um if you'll turn uh to page eighteen, that will be the statement revenues for the governmental funds. You can see the general fund uh showed a net change, which simplified, it's called net income of ninety-two thousand. The non-governmental funds showed a loss of eighty-six thousand. Uh to see that broken down, if you'll turn to page sixty-three, that kinda breaks down the revenues between the state street aid and the drug fund. State street aid.
My number's gonna run out.
I'm sorry.
That's what I was gonna, that was gonna be one of my questions tonight is, is it in a way possible, cause so many pages do not have numbers.
I think it was just the way the print, it normally don't be like that. This is my first time saying it like this.
Yeah, absolutely. Mine hasn't, so I'm sorry. I didn't realize that it didn't have that. Absolutely, we'll fix that. I apologize to that, Mr. McKinney.
Question, but I can't tell you what page it is on.
You tell me the title, we'll figure it out. I would, no, you're fine. I just wanna, no, yeah. It's just uh, just one, sixty-three, sixty-three. It's the combining statement of revenues. I just want y'all to see that column that's broken down between the two funds rather than combined, so you can see that the where that loss is generated from. Um if you'll turn back to page twenty, which is two pages from that other statement revenue, this is gonna be your proprietary funds, which is water, sewer, natural gas and sanitation. Cash and water and sewers, three million dollars, natural gas, six point seven, sanitation, four hundred and twenty-six thousand. If you flip it to the next pa- or the, yeah, the next page, it shows our uh our um notes and bonds. Um really, the natural gas sanitation doesn't have a whole lot of debt and then the water and sewer's got two point three million in debt, but that's servicing infrastructure and, you know, obviously with the assets that you have, you're you're in good good uh financial standing. Uh the next page, that's gonna show your uh your revenues and your expenses and come down to your change in net position. Water and sewer showed a profit of three hundred and forty-five thousand, natural gas a profit of a hundred and fifteen. Sanitation showed a loss of a hundred thousand. And uh we had talked about that in our utility board meeting, I think everybody's kinda got that.
What is that? Can you elaborate on this, reason why the loss of the sanitation?
The biggest reason is our rates need to go up because of the uh staff. Our uh personnel is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we're only showing revenue of five hundred thousand. So that that's, I mean, you can drill down a little bit further, but that's the the main.
We were raised, that was re- the reason we just raised.
Yes, I was gonna say it's, yeah.
Was it six month ago? I can't remember. We just raised the rates because of that. We knew this was coming.
Yeah.
Cause last year we had a, I don't think the loss was as much.
It wasn't that big, but obviously, yeah, yeah.
Was on a cone with that and the uh transporting it, the when we was having a transporter back and forth. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't wanna harp on that too much, I knew there had been things being, you know, to to correct that, but yes. Certainly, certainly. Absolutely, absolutely.
We might know, but they don't.
Yes, no, and absolutely. Yes, sir. Um the only other uh thing I wanna talk about, this was the first year we've had in a while where we had to had to do a single audit, which we have to do, for lack of a better term, extra auditing uh on specific things, uh on grants and stuff like that that comes through. With this year, we had, forgive me for the number, about eight hundred thousand dollars from the um COVID relief fund that filtered through this, from federal government to the state. We, I just wanted to bring the attention that after we looked at that, we found that um city was in compliance, using the money, what it was intended for, keeping good records, so uh we have no issues with that. And the only other thing I really have to hit on is on uh page uh eighty-four and this is, it's been corrected to this point, uh it's where we had um had some uh bid procedures, uh non-compliance issues. Uh main thing was our process, our bid amounts were needed to be adjusted. Uh obviously, costs are going up a whole lot more and we were, I think it was ten thousand, Mayor, is what our bid used to be. If it was under ten thousand, we had to get a bid.
When we moved this
It would move it to twenty-five thousand now, so that should rectify that issue and I've got it on the page behind it, that's corrective action plan and and that's been put into place. Um so I don't imagine seeing that uh finding in there again. And it's the first finding we put in here in a long time, so I mean, I I don't have any issue with anything.
And that bid was on the, we bid it, it was a warrior center project at the training center.
Yeah.
So we bid it out, but the, once they got through doing all the work on the building, it was more than what their original bid was. So and we, we knew it was gonna be like that, but I didn't, we didn't realize it was gonna be as much as it was gonna be, so.
Yeah.
Funny you say pillin', cause it's still pillin' apart now, down there. We still, we still trying to get it fixed.
But but it, you know, in summary, you're in great financial standing, you know, everybody's doing a great job. I enjoy coming here, working with everybody and 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 I said I'm open for any questions that anybody has that I can hopefully answer.
I'll say, I, well, I'll say this and then you guys ask a question. I just wanna commend our office staff and the department heads and Lisa, Carrie Beth, Charity, Tasha, all of them, department heads, they will hound you about paperwork receipts and all that stuff. Uh but they, when they come, they they do a good job and I I just wanna commend them.
Absolutely.
Every city doesn't have this, um and they come and they go through every piece of paper that feel like in that room over there. And you know, when it comes out like this, it's, I'm And you know, when it comes out like this, it's, I'm proud of them, I'm pleased with them, I just wanna tell them, thank you, so. Um and then so thank you to this.
Thank y'all.
No, I really don't like to see the audit coming, cause they just pick and nick and pick and nick and pick, but it it.
They're too bad on your layer.
Alright, but I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McKenna.
Uh you have answered one of my questions in regard to the bidding.
Yes, sir.
So that that's been corrected, so I'll move on to my next one.
Yes, sir.
And uh you were saying something about the uh general fund is four point million dollars, four point.
This is a June thirty.
Four point three four.
Yes, sir.
Million dollars, okay, what is the uh, I call it like the rainy day fund, I don't, what's the terminology? What do we have in the rainy day fund?
I mean, you know, I.
Yeah, reserve rainy day, same thing.
We don't have a.
Re- reserve.
Fund that's just sitting there, I mean, we have some investments that were placed in, but as far as an actual. Set aside money for a rainy day, I I don't know that we technically have that, but everybody's just pretty fiscal responsible with those accounts. I mean, there's, I mean, the the general fund alone probably has fourteen or fifteen accounts. But none of them are designated, you know, a flush fund or rainy day fund or whatever you wanna say it, there's just, they're just flush with cash. And they're, you know, they're making money, they're drawing interest off of those and um.
If the question, you probably answered this, that's right here, in page eleven. The balance four points four two million is available to meet day to day need, that's the question you get?
No, I thought last time, last year we were had a a reserve or something in case something happened, but okay. Uh that comes out of general fund, I'm assuming.
Yes.
If something happened, uh task catastrophe or something break down and we have to have money, I guess we get it out of reserve, I mean.
Depending on, depending on what it's, you know, if it's, you know, fire or police or something like that, obviously. Um now, if it's something to do with water and sewer and gas, that would come from those individual funds.
Okay, on page eleven, the same thing, it said a general fund budgetary, it looked like we're having some under budget items on here. Total revenue was under budget by eighty-one thousand, that's page eleven.
Yes, sir, I'm looking at it, it was just kinda some highlights.
Can you elaborate on those uh?
I I can, we, yes, sir, I can, let me get over here to the to look at those actual numbers. And 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 remember, when we're looking at this, we're comparing original to budget and the budget is just a. Kind of a living, breathing document. Um if you turn to page twenty-four, uh Mr. McKenna, it has the breakdown, so we budgeted um. Three point seven nine three, uh. No, I'm sorry, we collected three point seven nine three million, we actually budgeted for three point eight seven. You know, when when you're talking, you know, four million dollars in revenues, if we're within eighty-one, eighty-two in our budget. I I think we're doing pretty well, I mean, the only other way of correcting that would be to go and do a budget amendment. Towards the end of the year, when we go over, we may be a little short on collecting. Looks like, it actually looks like the beer tax was beer tax and uh. Looks like a pilot program, Baller Electric was what we under budgeted, um. Where we said we were gonna collect two hundred and sixty and uh the beer tax and we collected two hundred and two.
And them pilots are usually like that here, because we don't know what.
We don't know, that's right until it comes in, yeah.
So that that, is that something we have to do a budget, I mean, a uh amendment budget?
Really what they're more concerned about is if we're spending over our bu- if I, if we go over our budget on expenses, that's really what the state likes to kinda ding you on, being under budgeted on your expenses. Now, if we were two million dollars under budget or even two or three hundred thousand dollars under budget from our revenues, we would need to have a discussion. But there are some give and take on the on the budget, just because it is a educated guess for. Yeah, idiots, oh yeah, yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing to worry about, no, yeah, yeah.
Make sure we are, you know.
No, no, you're doing good shape.
Okay, the debt service.
Yes, sir.
Uh what is our debt service, how much we owe, how much is it now on our debt service?
Let me see.
So we finna do a budget, I mean, uh yeah, budget here pretty soon, so I wanna have some idea of what I, you know.
Yes, sir, so for.
So I don't have no page numbers yet.
On page fourteen, I'm gonna get you.
Fourteen?
Page fourteen.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can, yeah, yeah, I might have to go write my numbers, yeah, okay, I'm on fourteen, go ahead.
Alright, so most of our our debt is, if you look, non-current liabilities, but the second. Heading from the top, you'll see bonds payable, notes payable from direct borrowings and so on and so forth. For for the general fund, the city owes about, let's just call it five hundred thousand dollars. Really nothing when you're sitting with four million dollars in the bank. Um where the debt is, is on the utility department. It's gonna be your gas and water and sewer and that's, and gas doesn't have a lot of debt, water and sewer shows over two million. And that's for infrastructure and just keeping up with, you know, making sure the. They do, they do, um like I said, but you're still flush with cash in those, you know, there's. I mean, yeah, we could take the money that we've got in the bank and pay those notes off, but the interest rates are so low on those. And we wanna keep cash just to be healthy in case something, catastrophe does come up, yeah. So um there are some schedules on the um. Towards the back that kinda breaks down how much we owe and what bond, uh it it breaks it down into a more um individualized. Uh schedule, it starts on page sixty-eight and then it's sixty-eight, sixty-nine and seventy. And then you can kinda look and see, alright, here's, I just wanna read an example, uh general obligation bond from twenty, from two thousand eight. We owe a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on it, it'll be paid off in five years, you know, so it's, I mean. I don't know how interesting it is, but it's pretty handy to see, alright, this bond will be paid off in X number of years, so we got twenty years on this one, so. Um if you look at that, that'll kinda show you, you know, kinda what to expect from a cash flow situation on the, on that uh debt repayment.
Okay, I I, it's not a page number on here, like I say, you got, you got all pretty good tonight, because I had some questions, but I left my book at the house. So uh I got a book, but no, I had notes in my book.
On your books?
And uh so you, I I asked the mayor later on about it, cause uh.
Firstly, you can call him.
And and look, and I, and the mayor's got my number, if you have anything, you can always call me, Mr. McKenna, I'd be more than happy to answer anything I can.
Uh uh what I was looking at was the notes of the finance statement, you know what page that? Uh it's kinda in the back, more in the, half, almost in the, all the way in the back. But financial statement, um if I can find a page that was close to it, page number. But I'm not going with grammar tonight, I just, I'd get with the merit and cause I'll call you later.
I don't wanna say that word.
Right here, financial.
Oh, the notes of the financial statement, that's, yeah, the notes of the financial statement, that's what, that's language that we have to use.
Property tax, uh capital a- assets.
Yeah, that's just break.
And long-term obligations.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna know about the uh direct uh borrowing, bonds, like the uh fire truck, the uh West Park loan. Uh South Bank note, sit up all of the general fund, just things like that.
Yes, that'll be, yeah, that's gonna be the sixty-eight, sixty-nine and seventy of those notes. What you're referencing, the notes to the financial statements, that's just language we have to put into our audit report. To reference back to the opinion, uh.
But them the things that we owe on it, we owe, right?
Yes, yes.
We borrowed money to pay.
Correct, and there's three, there's three schedules back there towards the back, about the last. Twelve pages, twelve pages from the back, you'll see those, and they'll be turned sideways because they're landscape view, yes.
Yeah, I see that.
So yeah, that's the, my department heads, we brought, I brought this up y'all at our meeting this morning, I'm happy, we have brought that out. I can tell y'all the number now, we still owe right at two hundred thousand dollars from the loan they got in two thousand eight on the West Park out there. Them police cars, you ain't getting no more money.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, uh.
See, that's why I was getting it, what, you know, things like that, you know.
But like you said, the interest rate, we've talked about buying, paying it off, but the interest rate on it's so low.
Just so low right now, you got borrowing, it'd be higher.
I know we got a budget, be coming up maybe in May, and these are things that we need to.
Absolutely.
Be aware of.
Certainly.
When we do do the budget.
The good thing is, we've been, you know, we've been budgeting for these loan payments for years now.
Yes, right.
You know, so it's not gonna be anything new to.
Correct.
To scare you, but I absolutely need to know, and how close are we to getting it knocked out, certainly.
Just making them aware of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I I, like I said, I left my book at the house, I think that's about all I, that's all I have, I'm not going.
Well, I'm gonna study when I, I'm gonna study when I get home for that test, that's right.
Is that eight hundred number?
No, it's not, it's it's that far though, it's not, it's not long distance.
I gotta make a long distance then, okay. Okay, that's basically it, I I, you know, I like I said, I left the other.
I appreciate that.
I get somebody else.
And I certainly want you to to call me, and then we'll, I'd be more than happy to go with.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Anybody got any other questions?
Thank you again so much, I appreciate working with y'all.
We enjoy working with y'all.
Forward to seeing y'all come, but I get even happier when you leave. I guess we'll see y'all this time next year.
That sounds good, thank y'all so much.
Please check on the pages.
I will, I will, I'm gonna, you know.
Put the pages.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to cut somebody's page, that's what's happening.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he didn't copy.
Thank you, Joe. Thank y'all so much, y'all take care.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, next we have on the agenda to approve uh opening a bank account for the upper money from the utility department. Uh we were gonna put it at Simmons Bank, that was one that had paying the most interest, and I think we, that's next on our rotation. We usually try to rotate through all the uh local banks, so uh just need an approval to open that account up at uh Simmons Bank. I got a motion with Mr. Williams, second by Mr. McKenna, if you will cast your votes. You saying yes enough? Alright, close it up, we gonna put it down as a yes. Both should care, you get a new one every week, I think.
Every month.
We'll try to, we'll work it out, give up mine, I don't ever use mine, so. Alright, uh next on the agenda is the uh, y'all say motion care, motion care. Next thing is the uh industrial park purchase, and I'll try to, I'm gonna go back to sort of catch up to the new ones that wasn't here when we did. I'm not asking for any new money, the money has already, is already there, just wanna sort of let y'all know where we are, what we doing. We have, um I guess it's been maybe two, three years ago, we put money from an investment account that we had with the city that wasn't allocated. Uh it was four hundred and right now in it is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and third, four hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cent. And we um allocated that for economic development, for industrial recruitment, in the event that uh we were talked about using it to do some more land, to purchase more land, uh to expand our industrial park. Or whatever may have come up, may come up in the process of needing something done when it comes to economic development and industrial recruitment. Uh the, there's a, and what I'm asking for tonight, um like is asking for, okay, to move this money, well, purchase, spend some of this money to purchase the ICE building on Van Buren Road. Um if, I don't know how familiar, I, everybody know that building that I'm referring to. Uh that building has uh been vacant for about three years now, and I noticed the three years that it's been vacant, I've had, I know two, three, at least three uh industrial prospects that wanted to purchase that building or looking uh to moving in that building. But we didn't have ownership of it and the um, not to go through a whole, I could probably tell y'all the whole story, it'd take an hour. But not to go in depth in the whole situation, the prop, the business closed and the property owner did not pay the taxes for the last three years. So March first, it will go up on tax, on a tax sale. Um instead of going through the process to go at a tax sale where I may or may not have the opportunity to bid. We, I didn't know who would come to this sale to bid. Uh I did reach out and was able to, with a lot of help and a whole lot of stuff, be able to speak to the property owner. And I got the property owner to approve, uh say approve, I got the property owner to agree to sell the building to the city uh for a hundred thousand dollars. Um minus the taxes owed, um and I'll just tell y'all that it's a steal, like. Well, like an illegal steal almost for us to be able to get this project done. Uh this, that building is right at seventy, I think it's seventy thousand square foot or seventy-five thousand square foot. It's like right at sixty thousand worth, sixty-nine thousand worth of manufacturing space and a little over five thousand square foot of office space. And it's for a hundred thousand, and it's full of equipment, we could prob- the equipment that we can get out of it, we could easily uh pay this. It's gonna be, we give the exact number that we'll be purchasing, it's like sixty-two thousand, sixty-two thousand one sixty-nine. The back taxes is thirty-seven thousand eight thirty-one. Out of that thirty-seven thousand, some of that will go back to the city, so we will recoup some of that on it as well. I took um, I took uh Mr. Watkins, Eddie Vanover and Jerry, a lot of all the department heads, Jim, they all went through it. I've taken the TVA, ECD through it, let them see it, and they, everybody's excited, and I mean, we could really put our city on the front edge when it comes to uh having a building that's ready. If anybody has been involved in construction, you'll know that to have a industrial building built and ready to go at that size in this area, they just, they don't exist, most of the industrial buildings like that are, they're in bad shape or in disrepair. It's a ten acres of land.
Ten acres?
Yeah, um so honestly, even if we buy this property and do not get a tenant in it, which I hal- highly doubt it. But in the event that we go five, ten years and do not get a tenant in it, we will well more than make up the money that we spent on it with just the equipment in it alone. Um and I mean, it's forklifts, it's, it's all kind of stuff in it, um so. But like I said, I'm not asking for the money, we have the money already budgeted and set aside to do something like this. But by being a purchase of this size, I did want to run it by the council just for y'all's blessing to do it. And what we, I'll tell y'all what our plans will be for, is as soon as we get this uh done and get the deed in our name, we will um hire some temporary workers to go and clean it out, because it's just, it's been vacant and it's trashed. Uh go clean it out and get it inventoried of what's actually there. Uh I know the utility department, street department, there's some equipment in there that they can use uh today, probably. Um and then, once we get it all inventoried out, we will start the process of um trying to recruit somebody there to open up and and uh market that building for someone to put an industry in it, that, so that will be my plans with, um soon as we get it. So I'll um ask, answer any questions I can, I did have a little support here uh from Chris Bearman, uh pre- vice president of business development and marketing, and just to talk about uh the building and his recommendation. I didn't have time to get back, I didn't, uh May two H uh engineered the calendar and looked at it as well, but I mean, we, we can't go wrong with it, honestly, so.
How much taxes did they owe on?
Thirty-seven thousand one something, the last time I wrote it down, thirty-seven thousand eight thirty-one. Now, there's taxes, fees and fines and interest, that number will change, uh it's probably changed since I wrote that down, but once we go, it, it won't change that much, but uh. It, that's, that's what the back tax, that city and county taxes.
Well, a hundred thousand to purchase that building, and they look like they got a lot of equipment in it, it's not an empty building.
Oh, no, it's not, it's, he closed that business and literally fired it.
Yeah, I remember that, that being.
It was a sad.
A hundred thousand dollars and, I mean, that's just a win-win, you're gonna sit about. But that, uh for that being said, I make a motion that we uh per- go ahead and purchase.
Uh motion, I said, they know the discussions, any questions? I press it so hard, Caroline, you made it. There you go, you say you've been hitting it too hard. Alright.
You got some long nails or something?
Motion, motion care, uh thank y'all for that, um that's it, I think I got a slum hearing after this, so slum committed, just stay still. Motion of John, Mr. McKenna, second. Second, Mr. Gold, on all in favor, say ah, any opposed? Both should care.